Joe Delasega, who was one of the co-chairs along with myself, as well as people that sat on it, if I can remember correctly, Sean Nakarado, Becky Gray, Mark Lehman, and Cameron, you were on there as well, correct? Yes? Awesome. So, what do you guys have planned? However you want to come up and proceed.
Hello, Mayor Johnson. Joe Delasega. I had the privilege of chairing IP 2030 with Mayor Johnson and with Jeff Poe, and thank you very much for the time you put into that. I think you would share our excitement over the process and what went into it. So, what I want to do is to tee today up for everybody here. Over six years ago, IP 2030 was initiated, and it's interesting, that coincided with an opportunity when I had actually changed some position that I had. It freed me up a little bit, and I remember being so motivated to hear that that process had started and that there was a chance that we could get a unified vision that the entire community could get behind. So, the plan was started, and the exciting thing that we found when we came together as a group was that we had how many things that were done of IP 2030 that actually, what came out of that process had actually guided a lot of the decisions that were made by the city, people in the city and the commissioners. What we also found, though, in that process, as we started to evaluate where we were and what we were in the middle of doing and what we wanted to do in the future, was that we didn't do a very good job of tying certain milestones and things that were getting done into the plan, meaning IP 2030 was kind of that vision that we had set out there. There were so many things that were done and people coalesced behind this notion of becoming something different in 2030. One of the most exciting parts of the process for me was when we sat back and started talking, visioning with our team. And in that process, we began to really imagine. And today, several of us are here and they're going to break that down. Blake's going to hit on the imagine part, but for me is why couldn't we ask ourselves if we were going to be a community of 30,000 people by 2030? And we started saying to ourselves, what's wrong with that? What would that mean? What would growth look like? And it became more and more exciting because it affected so many decisions and so many places that we could go. For me personally, five years ago, I have, I have four children, Janice and I, and not one of them lived in Pittsburgh. Today, two of them live in Pittsburgh, my daughter and his son who just moved home, who actually has, with his wife, three children. And I will tell you, the role we may have played in parents in getting them back was that the hope that was inspired by IP 2030, we feel this is a community that has some momentum. It's a community that has vision. It's a dream. And what I've found in my travels and my work here in southeast Kansas, that there's a lot of people asking me everywhere I go, what's going on over there? And how come you're able to do this and grow as a community when lots of other small communities aren't getting it done? So, for me personally, this has become a labor of love. For me personally, it was an opportunity to work with people in this community, some amazing people that have talent and skill sets that I don't think people appreciate, the kind of talent that we have here. I think the other thing is, when we were in this process, we didn't just limit it to a group of 17 or 18 people. When we actually began looking at the different areas, there were four areas. We've expanded it to six by adding education and communication, which you'll hear more about. But what we actually did with those teams was to even expanded our reach further by going out into the community and to bring people in that had expertise and knew about certain areas. So, I can tell you, I come before you today not limited by a small group of people, but this has very broad appeal. The other thing was the process at the end where we actually went out into the public, provided lots of opportunities and talked to hundreds of people to get their feedback. So, again, very excited about the process, very excited about the people that we have leading the process, and very hopeful for the future of this community. So, it really, as we sat around and talked as leaders, that if the best thing we can do is to be in sync with the city commission, with the government, city government, and our citizens, to all be able to get behind this vision. And so, that's what we're trying to do today is to take that next step by communicating what we've come up with and hopefully allow you to jump in and share this vision and lead us into the future. So, without further ado, what I'd like to do now is to turn it over to Blake Benson, who will start his program. Thank you.
Thank you. See why Joe is our warm-up act. Greatly appreciate everything he's done along with Mayor Johnson, as both of them have co-chaired this process. So, we're here tonight to present the final recommendations for IP 2030. As Joe said, we rolled this out to you last fall, eight town hall meetings, over 400 residents. And with your approval tonight, we will finalize this. So, we definitely need your feedback as we go along. Since 2012, I want that slide to soak in for just a moment. $320 million in construction projects, 1,000 new jobs, almost 10% rise in median income, and Becky has verified through census numbers that our poverty rate has declined from 23% down to 19%. So, still higher than it should be, but we're trending in the right direction. Here are some of the bigger projects. Community is welcomed. Since 2012, I'd like to think that the seed was planted with all of them, with the first IP 2030 plan. Not that it was responsible for this, but the seed was planted, and both or all five of these really set the way as we move forward. Business expansions, counted this up today just with these seven employers. This represents $100 million in investment in our community. Proud to say the city has played a role in helping to facilitate all of these. Now, imagine moving forward. By the year 2030, what if we had 30,000 residents? What kind of resources would that bring to us? Retail attraction, workforce development, really getting above that small community threshold is something that would be achieved by 30,000 residents. Our income, I told you, is up almost 10%. We're no longer the poorest county in Kansas. We have leapfrogged 16 counties since 2012, so we're still not where we need to be, but we're headed in the right direction. Same with the county health rankings that you'll hear from Tony today. At one point, we were, I believe, 103, and we're now in the mid 70s. So, think about what our county health rankings would be if we were at least at the state average. And considering where we've been in the next five years, I would take, or even 12 years, I would take being average in terms of both median income and our health. And continuing to expand our role as a regional hub, and probably most importantly, slowing that talent leak and encouraging more of our good graduates, even if they go off and spread their wings to be able to come home and set up shop here in Pittsburgh. So, how do we get there? Like this. Any questions? This is the brainchild of Darren. In our meetings, this made a lot of sense because it really helped us compartmentalize everything and know how everything ties together because we know nothing we do is really in a vacuum. But we also knew with our presentation to you, with the presentation to the town hall meetings, we knew that we needed to break it down specifically by area. And as Joe mentioned, in 2012, we had four core areas: housing, public wellness, infrastructure, and economic development. It became very clear very quickly that education and marketing were ones that we missed, so we made sure to add those this year. And as Joe said, we've spent almost two years on this update. We brought experts in the field, in our community, together to look at each of these areas, and it's their recommendations that you will hear tonight. And I think when we did this last fall, one of the best recommendations we had was from Commissioner O'Brien, who said, can we ask questions as we go? And I think that would be appropriate here tonight rather than getting all the way at the end and running out of time for questions or feedback. So...
I have a question.
What's that?
Since you said we can ask questions now...
Sure, absolutely. You can. Yes.
Have we included Crawford County in this conversation?
Through, primarily the CBB. Obviously...
But not directly with the county commission?
No, this was really specific...
Is there a reason not to?
Well, this was specifically for Pittsburgh.
I understand that, but Pittsburgh is a big part of Crawford County.
Certainly. Certainly. That's a good thought. I know from my perspective, I certainly wouldn't have wanted the county to feel like we were stepping on their toes by, you know, any stretch of the imagination. But certainly, if there are initiatives that expand beyond our Pittsburgh city limits and affect the county, we would want to engage them as well.
Well, everything affects the county.
Sure.
And that's what we're about.
Sure. And I think it's also, I mean, you bring up a great point. It's also important to note that just because something isn't in here doesn't mean we're not going to focus on it or that it's not important. I think especially since Darren has been here, there's been much better communication with the county and the regular meetings that you all have with the county. Working right now with Commissioner Murphy on an economic development committee that spans countywide because many of the other communities in Crawford County, in fact, all of them except Pittsburgh, don't have their own economic development department with incentives and policies. So, those conversations are happening. That collaboration is happening. But as far as a priority in this report that is specific to the county, it's not there right now. Okay? Any other questions? Without any further ado, I will bring up the housing expert, and of course, that's Becky Gray. And we've got your video at the end.
Oh, good. Okay. Good. Thank you, Blake. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much for being here. I'm glad you're joining us. As Blake said, it's been two years in the making to come up with this plan. And the housing committee was pretty involved, and we reached out to a lot of people to have conversations about what we need to do in Pittsburgh. And it comes down to three bullet points that seem pretty simple. But I think the process of going through those years of conversations have helped us, what I like to say is changed the story that we were telling about ourselves. So, when I took my seat as the housing director, I was hearing about a lot of negatives around our housing, and now we're talking about a lot of goals. So, it's shifted our perspective, I think collectively as a community, towards what we want to see that progress look like. So, within each of these three bullet points, of course, there could be eight subsections, and I'm not going to go that deep. But the first one, to create planned neighborhoods, is kind of self-explanatory in that we haven't really had a designed, planned neighborhood built out in our community for quite some time. We've had some that have been designed and built out very slowly over time, but we haven't had that one residential neighborhood like you might see in the suburbs of Kansas City that a lot of people look to as the model for what that looks like. So, that is one goal. Infill development, obviously, is a very significant goal. In the last year that was behind us, our building services department identified and helped the process of demolishing over 90 substandard structures. Only 12 of those were paid for with municipal dollars. The rest were all paid for by the owners themselves. With that, we end up with empty lots. And as a municipality, the most cost-effective development strategy is infill development. All the infrastructure is already there. We're just paying for the maintenance and the reconnection to it. So, that's a really appropriate and high priority strategy in terms of our long-term growth. And then, in community planning, we talk about creating places that people want to make. So, we talk about place-making. And our downtown community is the perfect environment for that place-making activity to go on. We have an impressive collection of turn-of-the-century buildings, and most of them are occupied on the ground floor. So, we have a lot of opportunity upstairs to increase our residential opportunities in the downtown community. And fun fact, when we first started talking about downtown living, there was some people who couldn't quite believe that there were people who would be interested in living downtown or people who would be interested in developing out those spaces downtown. And I want to introduce a couple of new friends that we have. The Bensters are here visiting from Boston, looking to create some opportunities in one of these areas. And on our tour of town today, they asked a young person, a young entrepreneur, who was working in one of the boutiques downtown, would you be interested in living in this kind of environment, a downtown loft? Absolutely, right? She was essentially begging, could you please make it happen now? So, I think we have a lot of opportunity in front of us in all three of those areas. Do you have any questions in particular about housing? Very well, then. Is it set up right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, then, what Blake is bringing up is a compilation that was created by Limelight Marketing. We partnered with them in, under that catchment of, we need to change the story we're telling about ourselves. We have a lot of really good data showing why housing has gotten where it's gotten in our community and why there's so many opportunities in front of us. And so, I think Limelight does a good job here. Thank you.
Pittsburgh, Kansas, the largest city in southeast Kansas, is driving the greatest investment in economic development the city has ever seen. In the past four years, Pittsburgh has experienced 1,000 new jobs, 10% average wage increase, and over $300 million of capital investment. This growth will continue with 500 to 600 new jobs planned within the next 24 months. This evolution creates an important need: homes. A recent housing study reported a lack of homes across the price spectrum, but particularly moderately priced homes, where residents are forced to wait for a home to be built or have to reside outside of Pittsburgh. Here are the facts. Two-thirds of people working in Pittsburgh live outside of the city and commute to work. 75% of people who make over $90,000 a year commute. 53% of survey respondents said the reason they don't live in Pittsburgh is because of limited housing options. To address this need, the city of Pittsburgh is actively seeking development partners to develop neighborhoods of high-quality, single-family homes. With over 400 acres of land ready for development within the city limits, the city is ready to partner to minimize risk and maximize return on investment. Incentives include: benefits of the Rural Housing Incentive District, specifically, property tax increment financing, providing land at little or no cost; customizing deals for each developer; expediting building review and administrative processes; facilitating local relationships with lenders, contractors, and others; considering new construction methods; and supporting marketing to drive lot and home sales. Interested in learning more about these aggressive incentives? Contact the city of Pittsburgh. We want to work with you, so come help develop Pittsburgh.
Becky and I talk often about, for a successful economy, it's almost like housing and economic development are two wings of a plane. I don't know which one is more important, but I'd like to have both of them. Also want to recognize very quickly Mark Lehman, who has also been on our steering committee and a very big part of the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 process. So, Mark, thank you for your help. Economic development, this is obviously something I work with Sean as we partner with the city to make things happen. You invested in a target industry analysis that showed our resources like water, how we can better leverage those for economic development success. So, now that we have the plan, carrying out those recommendations on a long-term basis, because it's broken down, short-term goals, midterm, and long-term goals. So, carrying out the recommendations is one of our priorities. Business retention and expansion, you've heard how well we've done recently with that. We have no plans of stopping and making it as easy as possible for our existing employers to continue investing in our community. Sean and the team at Pittsburgh State are doing a great job of not only working with entrepreneurs on campus, but also those in our community. So, continuing to grow that because that's really what our economy is built on, is successful entrepreneurs. And I mentioned the CBB, Convention and Tourism Trade is a big area of growth for us over the next five to 12 years with the Kansas Crossing Casino, the Bicknell Center, and the Plaster Center. It really opens up some opportunities that we haven't had in the past. But we still need things like convention space attached to a hotel. Something that I know Cameron's group is working on is making it more accessible and easier and safer for people to be able to stay in a hotel on the north end of town and walk to all of our restaurants. If you think about it, it's only half a mile, but it's probably the most dangerous half a mile in town to walk. So, making sure we're fully leveraging all of the opportunities in terms of economic development that the Convention and Tourism Trade bring us is something that we want to continue to focus on. And again, Commissioner, working certainly with the county, since the CBB is a county entity, is something that's extremely important to us. So, we've got, as you know, with our scopes of work, we've got several other priorities, but these are really the four that stood out in terms of economic development moving forward. So, if there are no questions on economic development, our public wellness, we were very pleased to have Tony Sandifer. Tony is the chief nursing officer at Via Christie Hospital, and she's going to talk a little bit more about the public wellness initiatives.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk a little bit about a public wellness committee. There was a lot of great representation and really engaged experts on the multiple parts of this committee, and three areas really emerged from this. The first one is to provide health support systems. As our area and our communities grow as a regional medical hub, I know we have some competing hospitals and/or facilities and entities across state line. We want to be the regional medical hub for the people here, people in Pittsburgh and surrounding areas. So, we're always looking for additional ways, not to just grow services for our existing providers, but really identify those gaps that are making our residents and our community go elsewhere to seek services. And so, that's one of the things that is a very big focus coming from this. The second one is to encourage active, healthy lifestyles. The video that you just watched from Limelight talks about growth. That's great. But with growth, you have human beings. Every human being has health. So, it could be really good health. It could be poor health, but they're going to be seeking and needing support systems. We always want to encourage healthy lifestyles, better supporting folks or the community, our residents, in their own support systems, outside of hospital walls, outside of clinics, living on their own, being able to manage their own lifestyles. Blake mentioned Crawford County has climbed from 103 to the mid 70s in county health rankings. So, we can continue to support progress by thinking about pedestrian walkways, supporting bike trails, supporting workplace wellness initiatives, and supporting other efforts which are really focused at making our community healthier. And the last one is mental health and substance abuse. Wow. Mental health resources or issues, they are the foundation for so many different illnesses. It is such a complex and tough process to get your arms around, regardless of what healthcare resource you are, because they all play a part of it. As such, there's not been a lot of progress that's been made on this front since the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 plan was first released. However, Community Health Center is expanding their substance abuse services on an outpatient basis, which Via Christie is really excited about, just so you know, which addresses substance abuse, opiate addiction, as well as alcoholism. So, really making some headway where it's such a complex issue, but we're starting to make some headway there and through some superior collaborative relationships as well. And so, that will really support and help the mental health and substance abuse issues that occur will continue to occur. Are there any questions?
Tony? And the public wellness piece, as Tony mentioned, was so big that when we did this the first time, that piece, when we got ready to roll it out, Chief Hulby looked at it and said, no, that's not good enough. So, we actually pulled that back for six months, further refined that, and made sure that that was, that we were reaching high enough in terms of public wellness because it does affect everything else we do. So, Tony, again, thank you. And with infrastructure, I'll turn it over to Cameron Alden.
Our group, we brought in quite a number of folks across the community, so it wasn't just the city staff because when this group looked at infrastructure as a whole, it wasn't just looking at your typical roads, sewer. They looked across the board at utilities, parks, all the other amenities that go into an overall infrastructure. For example, all those pieces would be our advanced technological systems. With the Internet of Things becoming more and more real, and that is a huge benefit for the community, with the amount of fiber that we have going on in town, that was one of the things that came out of our group. Looking at developing that, a full fiber-optic cable grid across the community to service not only the public, but also for the private entities, and also open up different business opportunities that other communities don't have because they will not have that fiber network that we do. And again, with the Internet of Things, it's one of Jay's big things he likes to talk about, how everything is getting more and more interconnected and being able to collect and share more and more data with all of our residents. The next item we had there was to strategize, to try and prioritize our infrastructure future. And in that, we're looking at discussions there. Creator started around creating Pittsburgh's master plan. So, we've got an overall vision, and when we look to make improvements in our different infrastructure, be it water or sewer, that we able to look into the future and get those sized correctly so that we do expand to grow to that 30,000 people in the future, that we're not having to replace or put in redundant systems. We're able to size that, make the economical choice now, the smart choice, and get it right sized for the future. Also in that is looking at a specific downtown plan. Downtown's got a very distinctive character, as Becky had mentioned, and trying to look in, preserve that, cultivate it, and make that a place, a destination for folks to be at, shop, live. In that, working in our existing bicycle and pedestrian plan as well. And also look at our, again, like say we're outside just strictly city, we're looking at trying to find a sustainable answer for our energy question. Because now that's been a concern of a number of folks in our business community. And the last one there is developing a sustainable capital improvement program. Big part of that is I can create all sorts of plans all day long, but we need to make sure that we've got that commitment to maintain and fund those as we move forward. The community has done a great job in that, recognizing that when they approved the additional quarter cent sales tax. That was one of the things that the group had expressed a desire to see that put forward. And citizens stepped up and said, yes, it is a great investment in our community so we can continue to maintain what we look to improve. With that, I'll look at continuing to invest in our road system. We'll be doing the reconstruction of South Rouse. We've already done the first portion of Quincy, and we're looking at the bypass as well to make improvements on that. Looking at also trying to stretch the dollars that we do have. We're working with KDOT to get what funds that are made available. There's not as much as there used to be, but we're trying to find ways to go after those grants to try and also construct trail projects so we can address the full infrastructure, not just pieces here and pieces there. Trying to make it with one big master plan. Questions? Thank you.
And briefly, as Joe mentioned, we have two new areas that we included in this update. The first of those is education. And when we did this the first time in 2010, we left out education. And how dare we? How in the world can we plan for the year 2030 without thinking about the people who are young people now and making sure that they're engaged and still a part of our community by the year 2030? So, Sean Nakarado was the chair of that committee, and I'll ask him to come up now.
Thanks, Blake. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good to see you again, and you for the first time today, I guess, Mr. Mayor. To carry on Blake's analogy with regard to the airplane, if economic development, housing are the wings, and I think education is the engines. And if for no other reason, we have to have adequate resources to educate all of Joe Delasega's grandchildren that he's adding to the community. The guy's so committed to growing to 30,000 in two years, he's added six. So, thanks to him. He's very committed. Pleased to have an opportunity to work in this. A lot of people have a tendency to focus on education when they frame it in K through 12, or you may talk about six through 12. We really try to take a holistic view of this and talk about pre-K through industry. So, it's almost like P through I. And it's a way that how do we align all of these separate and what could be otherwise seen as disparate, non-connected things and recognize it as it's an interconnected ecosystem of education that supports economic development and wellness and quality of place. The four areas that we have broken out... and wellness and quality of place. The four areas that we have broken out as the prioritization areas of highest concern, expanding workforce development, obviously, I'm sure many of you have heard often from our local existing businesses, challenges that they may have with regard to workforce development. There's a sizable amount of individuals out there who, if they had a little bit of additional training, and we're not even still talking about a lot of additional training, maybe a little bit of additional training, and they could get back into the workforce. Particularly if you're seeing the growth and the significant growth in our hospitality area, hospitality and travel and those kind of areas, that's something that our local businesses say over and over again, they don't have enough of. So that's an example of something that we have to identify. What are the needs of our existing businesses, as well as what are the needs of those businesses that are not yet here or that are going to grow? And how do we help ensure alignment and proper development? One of the areas that really came up early on in our discussions, because we were, I think, initially talking K through 12, because that's the paradigm most of us come to this at, they said, well, you know, somebody was in the room and said, we were just talking to, I think it was Blake, he had just been speaking to the local Pittsburgh area Young Professionals Group, and they said, you know, childcare is one of the most significant things and challenges that we face. Well, how can we think that we're going to grow if you have a number of people who either are making the decision on not coming here because there's nowhere for their children to go, or they're saying, I need to move somewhere else, and maybe I'll continue to work here, but so that my children will have a place to go? And that's something that since then Blake has taken on and spearheaded to identify ways that we grow and advance that, not only in the quantity, but also in the nature and the distinctions that you might have between the whole spectrum of early childhood development. That needs to be, we need to have more of that if we hope to grow. We want to have a focus on helping to advance all K through 12 schools. And actually, I would say, Commissioner O'Brien, to your point, those conversations have included looping in, Frontenac, Arma, all of the five school districts within Crawford County, actually, as we think about that, particularly with regard to CTEC, because we have a resource here that is connected to all Crawford County school districts. So how do we ensure that we are supporting all schools and St. Mary's Colgan as we think about the Publix and our parochial school here in town? And then finally, it's the helping to grow Pittsburgh State University. We have for some time had out there as an aspirational goal, as we think about 30,000 overall, we've had an aspirational goal to grow to 10,000 in our enrollment. That's something that we're going to need the help of everyone in this community, and it can't just all be on Pittsburgh State. It has to be that we build the kind of community that students want to come to, or the students that are here don't want to leave. But we want to grow to 10,000. But also aligning with regard to research and development and business and education support that we have, those resources right there at Pittsburgh State. We've done a really good job, I think, in the last five to seven years of doing better at that. But we need to continue to be intentional and strategic on that and aligning those master plans, those strategic plans between the university and the city. Any questions? Thank you very much.
And finally, the additional, the second additional area is marketing. As Joe mentioned, we identified pretty early on that not only were we not doing a good enough job of marketing the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 Plan, we weren't doing a good enough job of just marketing the community itself. And I would say that Sarah Runyon is a living, breathing example of what is possible through a vision strategy, because her position was identified five years ago, and now she's on board. So we're going to throw her right into it. First of all, I want to, I think Brandy Johnson is here as well. Brandy Johnson and Limelight Marketing have been a huge help in terms of putting together our marketing strategy. But with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah Runyon to talk specifics about marketing.
Thank you, Blake. So, marketing is maybe the final leg of this presentation, but it is an incredibly important part of not only sharing what's happening in our community, but advancing this plan forward. What the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 Committee continued to hear throughout this process and over the last five or six years was that Pittsburgh wasn't doing a good enough job of telling our story, and I think we can agree that we have some great stories to share as a community. So some of the initiatives attached to marketing was effectively telling our story. As we grow as a community and as we continue to achieve success together, we need to have a mechanism with which we can share that information with our citizens locally, regionally, and beyond that. Part of this effort is developing a Pittsburgh brand, strengthening that identity that our community has, and the vision that the community has for the city of Pittsburgh. Included in that is a rebranding effort, and you've seen that play out in the redesign of the city's website, and the redesign of our city logo and branding materials and more. And then the final leg of this is creating a comprehensive communication strategy. And part of that piece was hiring a public information officer. So I don't think that I ever expected my job would be an initiative, but it is. So part of my responsibility will be making sure that we put forward a concentrated and coordinated effort to share the success stories of our community, not just to advance the public information piece, but to advance this plan and to continue to develop our community in general. Any questions? Thank you.
Great job, Sarah. And finally, to wrap it up, as part of the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 process, we had enough funds from our first round to work with Limelight Marketing to develop a branding video that would really help identify and help shape where we wanted to go.
Blake, can you take two seconds?
Yes, absolutely.
First of all, I see Commissioner Munsell standing on the door. If we can give him a chance to walk up to his seat. And whoever, if you can't see this screen, it's probably worth the next two minutes of your life to wander over to this side of the room and just watch.
(laughing)
Don't want to be obnoxious, but it's, you know, it's a good video. We're proud of it. And this will end this part of the meeting anyway.
Obviously, Brandy Johnson and her team at Limelight did a great job with this. So hopefully you've got your seat.
The breadbasket of the nation. Traditional Midwest, flat farmland, and doing the same thing they've always done, right? Not so much. Down in the southeast corner, often escaping view, is a progressive evolution. Here, you'll find Pittsburgh. Born out of a hard-working and progressive mindset, the city's constant drive creates a unique forward-thinking spirit infused throughout our community. That spirit isn't manufactured or even recent. It's legit and deeply rooted. It's in how we live, how we work, and how we play. It's in our commitment to local business, to our schools, and to each other that make this city a place like no other. It's in our university. Yes, our university. Pittsburgh State isn't an enclave that happens to be in our city limits, with deep ties to our businesses, a defining role in our culture, and loyal fans the world over. It lives in all of us. Once a gorilla, always a gorilla. It's in our businesses. Pittsburgh's commitment to help businesses succeed is baked into the city's DNA. Through a dedication to the economy, this city of self-starters has changed, grown, and shifted ahead of the times. It's in our people. This unusually committed and resilient group that has always thrived on diversity, absorbed in a single purpose: to make Pittsburgh the best place to put down roots, to raise a family, and to move the needle for Kansas. And yet, we're doing it together, all of us working toward a common vision: to make Pittsburgh a place to grow, to share your idea, and together, build a future you never thought possible. Pittsburgh, forward together.
Yep. I know we're out of time.
Kansas, the breadbasket of the nation.
Might not see it again.
We're not out of time. We don't have to start on time. We just can't start early.
Okay.
So you're fine.
So I think especially since you've been given so much information tonight, and again, this really is us bringing the final recommendations to you. It really would be helpful for us, all of us that worked on this over the last two years, to hear your thoughts, any concerns you might have, or anything that we're missing.
I don't have any concerns, other than what I voiced earlier about including Crawford County in all of this conversation. I think this whole plan shows forward thinking that if we can follow this and continue with this thought process, I think it speaks well for the committee that worked on this and the city at hand. Thank you.
Take five minutes before you start the actual...